10th 2021 meeting of the Corvoo City Council to order, roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Gross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Hi.
Here.
Dodd.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
All right, all members of the council are here. Mary Lindell is gone tonight, so I'm running the show. Motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Moved by Goodrich is our second.
Second.
Moved by Goodrich, second and by Hwin. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved. Now is the time on the agenda for citizen comments. If anybody in the audience would like to speak on a matter that's not on the agenda, please step forward to the podium, state your name and your address, and we would love to hear from you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Karen Cummins, and this is Joyce Meyer, and this is Larry and Gabriella Robertson, and we're all from Welsh Village and here to address issues related to Dubtail Pond. What we'd like to do tonight is just initiate a conversation with you, and we understand you can't talk back to us, but at least let you know what our concerns are. Over the years, there have been several comments and correspondence related to Dubtail Pond, but from our point of view, it looks like nothing has really happened. So what we'd like to do is see if we can initiate something with you to start getting it into your budget. If there are some funds this year, we'd like to see some work be done on Dubtail Pond yet this year. Some... There's a letter, I think, that was passed out to you, and I know you haven't had a chance to read the whole thing, but I'm just going to go through and highlight one or two items from the letter. Over the past 10-plus years, property owners have contacted the city regarding the upkeep and maintenance of Dubtail Pond, and the first written communications of which we have a copy is April 26, 2011, and that's followed by one in 2013, and then a flurry of written correspondence in 2014, not all of which was between members of Welsh Village, but in the council, but some of it was us sending, the mayor said to do this, or those types of comments. And I think you also have copies of all of that correspondence. We'd like to bring to your attention, it's condition number three, which is on the front of that letter, and it's the last paragraph, and this was part of the original Corps of Engineers permit back in 1997, and it states, "The nesting islands shall be located in three to four feet of water, as far from shore as possible and away from emergent vegetation to protect the nests from terrestrial predators." And it gives side-slope recommendations. We have the pleasure of looking out over Dubtail Pond, in fact, that was the drawing point of why we live there now, but you can see just critters stroll across the water. There are carp whose fin, who's on top fin, breaks the surface, so it's really very, very shallow in that area. When we first moved there, there used to be a lot of ducks or geese, geese and the goslings, and there aren't any goslings anymore. I see them over on Brown Deer Golf Course in the ponds there, but I think it's just become too dangerous at this point for them to nest where in Dubtail Pond. So... I guess the last thing I would like to say is, we're really here tonight to see if we can, what can we do? You're the policymakers. You know, we've talked to staff and worked with staff, and they've done a nice job communicating back with us, but they can't make the decision without you either budgeting it or giving them the direction to do something. So what can we do to initiate the process, to get things rolling, so that Dubtail Pond can be a wonderful recreation area instead of the deterioration that is now in place? Thank you.
Great, thank you, Karen.
I'm Joyce Meyer, and I live next door to Karen and Phil, and I just wanted to let the council know that we have quite a few documents pertaining to the pond, and one of them is a letter that the Corps of Engineers, who developed the pond initially, left for the city when they turned the pond over to the city to be maintained. And they mentioned the concerns about invasive species, different plants. They did mention cattails that were encroaching on the pond, just along the edges of the pond. But the one thing that I thought was really interesting, there were eight points in this letter, and the one of them had to do with how to manage the pond, and one of their recommendations was that there should be a controlled burn every three to five years. That has never happened, and this was 15 years ago when they sent the letter. So, and it's really very unsightly right now, so that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Joyce. Anybody else?
Good afternoon, everybody. You guys probably recognize me from the last time I was here, about a month ago. First of all, I want to say thank you for the response I got from the council last month ago over this issue, because you guys' reaction was overwhelming. It touched my heart. It showed that you guys did care and didn't know what was going on. So I'm going to start again, three or a month later. I'm going to tell a little more about myself, so you know why I'm here. I'm not just a, what do you call it, a whistleblower, any of that negative stuff together. I have a single dad with four kids. My kids went to Coroville Central, Northwest Junior High. I coached basketball, softball, baseball, soccer. I was on the head cap commission. I got volunteer year for U of I School of the Wild. I'm a volunteer at the Food Pantry and self-made maintenance guy. And I'm on the board of directors. Just to name a few things. So you know the type of person I am. I'm just a, I feel like I'm obligated in life to help people, busting people down. And the instance I'm talking about now is one of our community members who was a 12-year vet, lived in Coroville for nine years, raised two kids to go to Coroville Central. Wife just had brain surgery a few months ago. He's undeliberately disability, and he's still trying to work as a senior Coroville employee, my fellow coworkers. Came to you guys here a month ago, and he was living in one of those properties on the Fourth Avenue that was sold by the city to a different entity, and soon as they sold it, he got a 30-day lease and then three-day notice, 30-day notice to quit. Well, you guys responded real good. They gave him some financial help and gave him two weeks. Okay, two weeks, guys. Well, we're into that two weeks. He still hadn't found a place. Only places available he's looking at are out of Coroville. Now, the whole idea of this project was to build that community. That neighborhood, this guy is a really, really, really important part of that community. He'd been over backwards for anybody, for any of his neighbors. He'd do anything for them. And now we're about to lose him. I need you guys' help. I need some understanding, and I need some guidance on how to stop this from happening. You guys did a lot of stuff before, but apparently it was enough. He still can't find a place. I need you guys' help. This is getting really bad. This is a really good guy. He works for the city. 12-year vet, been there nine years, paid his bills. The question I have is, when we do this kind of stuff, and this kind of push a little bit here, and we buy these properties, did we ever think about, and I'm going to be back to talk to you guys about this in the future, when we buy these properties, think about checking out the homeowner, I mean, the person that's renting it? For instance, we bought this property, and you check out this guy who's been there nine years. That's a good candidate to sell to. We're always selling to these big communities, these big companies, for the big development. Do you ever think about some small developments and selling them back to people like us? When I first heard about it, I wanted to buy the property because I wanted my buddy to stay there. Well, come to find out that it was sold to some big conglomerate who I can't match financially. And so that makes me feel unease, and it gives me a heavy heart, because now I really feel helpless. And that's my thing, like I told you guys, to help people. I can't help this guy. And little things like that, giving it back to the community, we could help each other. So had something been set up so we could buy the property, a regular citizen could buy the property, it would continue. It would start to circle in that community. We put it all back in there, but we're not doing it. So that's something for the future. I'd like for you guys to think about, because I will be involved in it. I want to be involved in it. Any decisions we make, anything I ask you guys up here, I want to be involved in it. Okay, I'm not going to ask you to do it. I'm asking you to help me figure out how to do it. I will lead it if you want me to, but give me some hands, give me some ideas, help me, guys. I'm just a regular guy. I don't know much about government procedures and stuff like that. I need you guys' guidance on what we can do. First of all, we got to help him. We have to help him. He's an outstanding member of our community, of our country, a vet. We have to help him. You guys, I need some more help. I need some more advice on what to do. I'm begging you guys. We got to help him. We can't let this happen. I feel like if this happens, it's going to start a chain reaction. And it's going to start a chain reaction of fear, because the word is going to go out. Guess what happened? I got let out by the city, and they're going to accuse you guys of doing it. Help me, guys. Give me some ideas. I forgot to leave my number last time. I remember to leave it this time. But if not, you guys, my name is Robert Lonnie Rogers, 503 Seventh Street, Coroville. Okay, you can get ahold of me anywhere. I work for the City of Coroville. Oh, yeah, I work for the City of Coroville, too. All right? So you got to get help anytime. But guys, if you can come up with something, let me know. I would be glad to help. But we can't, I can't lose him in our community, man. We can't. This is the last week. We can't lose him. He's a valuable member of the community. He's, I mean, this guy, he would give you his right arm if he could, give you his right leg if he could. My truck broke down. Remember, he's still trying to find a place. He had an extra van. He gave it to me to drive to go to work. That's the kind of person. I need you guys' help. Now I have a different agenda. Have to do it, my job. And I'm going to try and make this short and quick, because I'll be back to, I want you guys to think about it, and I'll be back again for the next meeting for follow-through. I work for the City of Coroville Parks Department. I love it. The people there are fantastic. It's a great job. I'm in seventh heaven. There's something that happened that concerns me. When I first started five years ago, we had six fours, level fours. One guy was the leader over everybody. In the last year, we lost three of those fours. So now we have three fours, and we replaced them with three threes. Okay, so if anything, if you guys understand, I know you guys understand the level. We did not replace those fours, and the tasks that those guys do, the fours do are skilled tasks, tasks that require certifications and stuff like that. What I'm finding out is that now my boss, who's a four, he's getting more stuff dumped on him because there's no other fours that are qualified to do it. And so that means that the other two fours are getting stuff dumped on them. So I want to ask you guys, is this normal? Is there something going on? Is there something I'm missing? Is there a procedure? Is this temporary? I don't know. Again, help. I need to understand what's going on. Because the way it looks to me is like the system I was used to that ran so smooth with all those fours, and then the seasonal and the threes below them, it's gone. It's gone. Myself, and my boss, and the guys working with me, I love my job, but there are days we run around like chickens with our hair cut off, because we have tasks that we have to do now that we didn't have to do, and that they don't have anyone qualified in that area to do. So I want to ask you guys to look at that. Look at that structure. Look the way it went from six fours to three fours, and the fours are being replaced with threes. And just going to keep it simple. Again, I need you guys' help. That's all. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. And like I said last time, I really appreciate all you guys' responses, because I know you guys didn't know what was going on, and it seems so genuine that, you know, I have a lot of faith in you. So that's why I'm back now, guys, help. I need, I need help to help my community. I need help to help my coworkers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Any other comments? So just real quick, I think regarding Ms. Meyer, Ms. Cummins, well, is that a Parks and Rec issue? Is that the pond? Okay. So Sheri, you're here. Are you, is that something you can look into, to get back to the Dubtail residents and just kind of where things are at? And we'll have a discussion as well, too, from a, from a policy standpoint. I just looked at your, your letter came in at 1:00, so I've not had a chance to really read it in depthly, but we will do that absolutely. And regarding Mr. Rogers, I'm assuming that, I think, a lot of public entities are, with the pandemic, are short-staffed and are doing a lot with little, and I think one of the things when we have our discussion as a council here about some of the federal money that we've received, I think that's one of our goals, is to try to replenish some of what was lost. So I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I just want you to know that's kind of where we are with that. Okay, letter, my goodness. Number five, Lot 1, Lantern Park Plaza, Third Edition. Don, the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2021-1011, and ordinance amending the Coroville zoning ordinance to same being ordinance number 2020-10009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Coroville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot 1, Lantern Park Plaza, Third Edition, from C2 Arterial Commercial District to CPUD2, Commercial Plan Unit Development 2 District. Introduced for adoption, second consideration by Councilmember Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Moved by Foster, seconded by Goodrich. Any discussion? I would just say, this is for viewers, this is for a grocery pickup kiosk on the Hy-Vee property. Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Win.
Aye.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Motion passes, five votes to zero. And ordinance C, to collapse this for a third and final ordinance. Don?
Oh, we have to have the vote.
Motion.
Oh, we have to, you're correct.
I'll make a motion to collapse the second and third reading for the ordinance number 2021-1004.
Moved by Dodd to collapse this ordinance reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hwin. All in favor say aye. Oh, roll call.
Roll call on this one, sorry.
Okay.
Win.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich. Foster.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Now, Don. Item C, ordinance.
Ordinance number 2021-1011, and ordinance amending the Coroville zoning ordinance to same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Coroville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot 1, Lantern Park Plaza, Third Edition, from C2 Arterial Commercial District to CPUD2, Commercial Plan Unit Development 2 District. Introduced for adoption, and third and final consideration by Councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Moved by Gross, seconded by Foster. Roll call.
Win.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item D. Don?
Resolution approving the PUDB site plan for Lot 1, Lantern Park Plaza, Third Edition, Coroville, Iowa. Introduced, Councilmember Win, seconded by.
Second.
Moved by Hwin, seconded by Dodd. Discussion? Roll call.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Win.
Resolution passes unanimously. Item 6, Coroville Town Center Repairs. On the resolution.
Resolution accepting bids and awarding a construction contract for the Town Center Ramp Repair Project. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Moved by Dodd, seconded by Goodrich. Any discussion? Roll call.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Win.
Aye.
Dodd.
Resolution passes unanimously. Item B. Don, the resolution.
Resolution approving the contract and bond documents for the Town Center Ramp Repair Project. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Moved by Goodrich, seconded by Hwin. Discussion? Roll call.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Win.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Oops. Sorry, Ms. Goodrich. Yes. Resolution passes unanimously. Agenda item 7, REAP Grant Application. Don, resolution, please.
Resolution approving an application to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for grant funding via the Resources Enhancement and Protection REAP Program. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Moved by Foster, seconded by Dodd. Discussion? Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Win.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution passes unanimously. Item 8, Brown Deer Golf Club. Don, the resolution, please.
Resolution approving a food and beverage operations agreement with Bunkers at the Brown Deer Golf Course, LLC, for Brown Deer Golf Club. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Moved by Gross, seconded by Foster. Discussion?
I'm excited for this new adventure, and I want to congratulate Sheri and Kelly and those involved in finding a new way to market and use Brown Deer Golf Club.
Thank you. Lauren, are you familiar, are there going to be any noticeable changes that people will be able to see?
No, I think it'll, I mean, they'll, we'll continue to have banquets and other facilities available upstairs, and I think their goal is to try to have a wide variety of options for people that are using the upstairs that we haven't had in the past.
Excellent. Great. Thank you, Kelly. Roll call.
Win.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross. Aye. Resolution passes unanimously. I would consider a motion for item 9, to approve the consent calendar as presented or amended.
Mayor Pro Tem Gross, I would ask the council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar A through S inclusive.
Moved by Dodd to approve the consent calendars are second.
Second.
Moved by Dodd, seconded by Foster. All in favor say, oh, roll call. Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Win.
That passes unanimously as well. All right. They made it a short agenda for me. Thank you. Mr. Hayworth, City Administrator's report.
Three quick things. First, today I received official notice from MetroNet that they will begin providing video service in Coroville, so that would be their official notice that they do intend to continue to move forward, and they indicated to us that their work in Coroville would actually start late September time period, and that would end up providing fiber to the home. So this would be just another option that residents would have, which having more options is a good thing, so. So we look forward to that, working with them. This Saturday is the Fifth Street Social, and encourage people to come out. A lot of fun from 4:00 to 10:00. They've got family activities planned, music. And one of the interesting notes is that this is the 100th anniversary of when this first started, when there was a dance on Fifth Street when it was originally constructed. So this is the 100th anniversary, and there'll be a little bit of recognition of that 100th anniversary Saturday night. And just also point out that as of August 18th, so this coming Thursday, we will be transitioning to a Hyatt Hotel, and so that, a majority of the staff, I believe there are only two that are moving on to different, different locations with Marriott, and the rest are all staying at our facility and have been hired, and so you'll still see some of the same friendly faces there, and they're quickly hiring additional people to fill in some of the vacancies. And that's it, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hayworth. Don, City Attorney's report.
I have nothing, Kevin.
Nothing for me, Alphal.
All right. Mayor's report. A few things that I would say. First of all, I think this was released today that the city, as we're all seeing, is under a face mask mandate. I think it's something that none of us wanted to be in, but unfortunately, the predicament and situation puts us in this position, so Coroville joined other local municipalities requiring the use of face coverings in city buildings, so we do ask that you please adhere to that for everyone's safety. Second, I wanted to say, I was unavailable to be at National Night Out. I had a school principal's conference in Des Moines, but it looked like it was a very great event. So Lieutenant Coleman, thank you and all your colleagues for putting that together. We really appreciate your community engagement with the city, so thank you very much. And lastly, I believe, Scott, you sent an email follow-up on the Starman property. I saw that, I was looking at the Dubtail, which I haven't had a chance to read that either, but I was able to go to that residence earlier yesterday, and so I would like us to have that discussion at some point, even though I haven't had a chance to read your report on that. But I did go to that property a year ago, and definitely have noticed some differences just in the property itself from where things were, but I'm sure there's a lot more to the, than that as well. And that is all I have from my perspective, so we'll start off with council members and committee reports, and we'll go way down here, since she's all lonely without me sitting down there. Ms. Foster.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I, you know, in keeping with the theme of the evening, do not have much on my radar right now. Everything that, you know, I was thinking of mentioning, you have already covered. The only other thing that I wanted to mention was that residents have the opportunity to weigh in on the 29 million that Johnson County is receiving in ARPA funds. There are several opportunities to provide input on that. There, on our city website, there is a lengthy list of times and places where you can weigh in. They also have other options as well. There's a mail-in option. But I think it's, you know, really important that everyone in Johnson County takes the time to make their voices heard on how these funds should be spent. And other than that, I'm looking forward to the Fifth Street Social this weekend, and wanted to also say that I appreciate the swift action that we have taken to ensure the safety of our residents by requiring masks on city property. I want to thank everybody that helped, helped make that possible, and my hope is that we can, after a brief period of, you know, a few more precautions, that we can get some more folks vaccinated and start, you know, the path to the new normal again. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Councilor Foster. Councilmember Win.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Again, I don't have much, but I want to echo on what you and Megan said, that thank you to all of the staff for taking swift action as far as requiring masks. I think in our area, you know, the faster action we take, the better it is for us to protect our citizen. I also would like to thank everyone for organizing and coming out for National Night Out. It was my first one participating as a council member, and I have to say, I was very happy to meet with community member and see how happy everybody were to be able to socialize together safely. It was beautiful, and I hope that once we return back to normal, everything is safe, it becomes bigger and better. Thank you to the police department and the fire department for going around. I keep hearing people, positive feedback of, you know, having the fire truck in there, right in their street. It was the best thing ever. Well, kids, it's like Christmas come true. And I would encourage everyone to come out for the Fifth Street Social. Make sure that you are conscious of, again, the safety of everyone, and, you know, and I would encourage people to get vaccinated if they can. Please do get, do get that vaccine into your body. You will help protecting everybody else who cannot. So, thank you so much.
Good. Thank you, Councilwoman Win. Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to say that this National Night Out, missing it last year, this had to be the fun, the best time I have had in a National Night Out in 10 years. People were really up for being out and celebrating, and we talked and laughed, and we were pretty late, I think, to some things, because we couldn't tear ourselves away from some of the parties, but it was outstanding, and so it was a really, really good event this year.
You're making me jealous.
I know. It was, I mean, I don't know. We laughed so hard. It was great. I wanted to follow up on- I wanted to follow up on my last comments at the last meeting with the police department and the unmarked vehicle. I had a good conversation with Chief Crone. So I am speaking as a Corvillo counselor from our Corvillo chief. I cannot speak for the county. I cannot speak for other municipalities. But Chief Crone assured me that if you were pulled over by an unmarked vehicle, which we do have them, but we don't use them necessarily for traffic stops. They're mostly used for more dangerous type of police activity. But he said that there is no problem whatsoever to dial 911 to see if indeed there is a police stop happening. They will know and be able to tell you if that is factual or not. And the other thing, he says, simply turn your overhead light on in your vehicle, point forward. They will know that that means you're going to go to a more well-lit populated area and there will not be an issue with that in Corvillo. And that was very reassuring for me to hear that. And I know our Corvillo police officers are very respectful of our citizens and I really appreciated that. I'm not saying this job is done yet because that's just Corvillo and that's one small part of Iowa and there's still some legalese in, in that bill that I'm not real happy with. So, but at least in Corvillo, I think we're, we're in good shape. And finally, just to echo once more about the vaccines, I do childcare. My entire population of children are not vaccinated, so I worry about each and every one of them like they're my own kids. My grandkids are too small to be vaccinated. If you're not gonna do it for yourself, please do it for them. And that's what I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Dodds. Real quick, did you email the constituent that talked to us, that sent us an email about the unmarked police cars with the update?
I've been in contact with her, yes.
Good.
I need to finish up.
Perfect.
She had some other comments too, so.
Okay, great. Councilmember Goodrich.
Thank you. I echo what's been said already and really enjoyed National Night Out. Also, Mayor John Lindell and I were on a team. We missed you, Mitch. And we probably weren't as much fun as your group was, but we had some great visiting and enjoyed being out in the public.